It's Thursday night again. The next regularly scheduled meeting and my follow up meeting the order is about six oh two. First thing is to set an agenda, if anybody wants to track anything.
Um, well, I guess, but I don't know if we really need to do as an adjustment about trails. Midi is not going to present tonight and that it's listed there, but we're just going to go at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Ready, so I don't like.
No, and that's. Um.
Eric's fault. No, it.
It's possible. Um, uh, any other agenda things? All right, grand role of the agenda as written, communication with the audience. Anybody here for Ross?
Yeah.
Please state your name.
Sure, it's all right to stay here.
Come sit right over here.
And there's a.
Microphone.
Microphone.
My name is Ross Connolly, I live here in the village. Um, I want to express concerns about the rail trail. The journey is absolutely wonderful, but they lot of use of it and I think it's actually a boon to the area and to the state.
Um.
I took many walks on the trails as fast as I can. Um, and it travels through the village and along the river. As they say, I think it's that big comfortable condition. Uh, for those that are fortunate enough to live here. Uh, the number of people abusing the trail in the village is increasing. Um, one evening, there were more than a dozen people out there, um, riding bicycles, um, walking off on the children and dogs. There's even one woman who was using the trail with her walker. Um, they passed somebody out and walked about three miles, went down to the bridge, the west end of town, turned around and all the way up. To the bridge by Hardwood Building. And, um, I was surprised to see speed limit signs that close to drive fast. Indicating thirty-five miles an hour is the maximum speed, um, allowed on the trail. There were no lower speed signs when it runs through the village. Yeah, even in feet, uh, the health center, town's garage, you know, river people. Now, you know, the home of the, or the start of the society. Um, my home is on West Church Street. We travel on this rail trail. And there's a number of houses that have got the delta. And these streets posted at twenty miles per hour. And for like safety purposes, thirty-five miles per hour. It's too fast at maximum speed limit to allow snowmobile traffic to go through the village. And, um, Ramona Valley Rail Trail is a multi-use trail all year. Snowmobilers traveling twenty, thirty-five miles an hour along section of the trail. For people that are common, it's going too fast. Vassements, bicyclists, people on bros, skis, or snow machines, shoes, dogs, letters, people on horseback have much right to use the trail as snowmobilers. And the snowmobilers bring a boost to the state's economy, which is good. Despite the public safety, the constant sacrifice of one road to trail means over another. And I'm going to send this statement, um, to Senator Kitchell, who's chair of the appropriations committee and will swiftly provide on the back. She helped, um, three of get money for the rail trail. And to his Jackie Cassini, Senator Cassini, who I understand is the manager for the project and the committee. Um, and I. I have this concern about public safety and. I don't know whether the board would be willing, but if so, I would, um, resident and partway would encourage the board to, uh, um, express concerns about, um, not having a lower speed limit. When the rail trail goes through the village as a matter of public safety. So those are your thoughts.
Thanks, Ross. I think, um. Yeah, I hadn't really thought about it, but if you put it in that light of you traveling through the village and every, you know, we have slower speed limits for cars in the village. Um, it kind of makes sense.
Most of it. The best authority over.
The state of the mind.
Oh, yeah, because the back we met post there. Oh, it's the numbers, it's the state number.
Right.
For the whole trail, I think, the whole state.
The whole trail, all rail tracks.
All rail trail, all rail trails in the whole state.
That are traveled on by snowmobiles.
Yeah. So the.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the, that's what it is in Morseville, that's what it is in West Endville, that's what it is. Everywhere else where there's pedestrian, there's more places, it's why, you know, this isn't the only place where this.
Right.
Ross considers for real, trust me. Um. So. I mean, I've talked about it, nowhere else as I know of, they lowered it. Billings.
Downhill side.
Tom Jefferson.
Well, I just thought a bit of it, you can model it from more still than Jeff, but I don't think it must have, most states, they've been a little bit. Um, all around, Joe Palos, those. The. Especially, but Tom Jefferson, it's lower than speed limits.
Turnability to shoot.
Like as anybody.
Well, so there's. I know, but I don't believe there's been a great deal of effort. And now I just add this fellow wailer, this is here, we'll call this letters.
I, I, I just wanted to comment that I know that I've been contacted by the governor's committee, I don't know.
City committee.
Governor, Navy Committee of Soulville. Um, and they are very concerned about speeding on the rail trail. Um, hence the grants to local law enforcement and the state police.
Yep.
To patrol, their, their goal is to get out pretty hot and heavy at the beginning when the trails open up and to do some serious.
Speed enforcement. So I think the effort, yeah, I know, I know, it's like. But the effort is thirty-five, yeah, so the, the effort is to get everyone to go thirty-five. Right, because it doesn't matter if you're on West Church Street or if you're down on the outside of Grand Union. On the rail trail, it still knows their uses, still will be on so, there, there's no, it's hard to put effort into bringing this down to fifteen when we can't even get anybody down to thirty-five several.
Yeah.
So I think right now, the main effort is, is being concentrated on getting everyone to stay at thirty-five is the speaking. Most of us that ride in village settings know, just as we do with our collar reels, when you come into a village setting, you need to slow down. Go up to the lobby, others on it, so. But I don't, so we're going to have law enforcement right here, right, on rail trails, so hopefully, I mean. I don't want to, you know, open to discussion of the effort to lower that, but I think we should need to. If we got everyone to go thirty-five, we'd be way ahead of the game and everybody would be getting with sixty guys if we go, there would be fifty's way too slow or twenty's for real.
Would it be helpful, can you hear me okay? Would it be helpful in the, I, I hear what you're saying, Danny and, and Ross, there's no harm in asking, right? What, like, if, if we can do that, asking the state and what the process is for that? And then I'm also wondering, I don't know if they work in the winter, but especially coming, uh, like into the health center area, if there was a sign where we could put one of our speed radars. Might be helpful, um, I don't know if that's something we can do in the winter, those should pick up a snowmobile.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, no, that'd be a great idea.
That's a good idea.
Because, you know, if you put it out there just for the health center, everybody's going to be doing more than thirty-five, so let's go. It's good, the idea that kind of slow down, you can get to that level. I mean, we're going, it's going to be an issue, Ross, I, I guarantee it, it's going to be.
But we also have the advantage of street crossings right in the village, it's going to slow people down, right? Well.
Yeah.
Well, snowmobiles is not a right, it's, it's a privilege. It both don't.
Any rules that don't have to be. One of the, um, questions I heard asked at L B R T meetings is. Um, typically on bash trails, there's, it's multi-use, there's horse and buggy, there's cross-country spears. Um, and that has been for snowmobiles, snowmobiles pay to use the trail. So it'll be interesting, I, I wonder what the, what the answer to the question of who has the right of way on the L B R T.
Well, personally, the people, right?
During the.
That's how I was supposed to.
During the snowmobiling season, and that's not how it's.
Snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles.
And the right of way.
Yeah, so on the L B R T, which is opposite from, well, no, which is how bash trails are.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Well, I guess.
Common sense would tell you that, you know.
You mean, you tend to yield a bit, that's changing because from a.
No, I don't, I don't stop when it is, you have to stop, but then everybody changes. It's totally an aspect.
Yeah. It's. It's a question and.
It's a question, we also haven't had the rail trail open here for winter, so we actually don't even have a single winter experience.
Right.
And I guess, before getting too excited about trying to change things, I'd kind of like to see. What the real experience, the lived experience is of having the snowmobiles.
Right.
Here.
It's going to be good here, because this is, this is new trail, new, new rail trail, and there's still the other way around.
Right.
So it's very unlikely that it was, you know, we're not, it's not like we're going to a hundred percent. Of the use, um, of the new trail, and some people started going wrong.
But I think Ross has a really good point, that, you know, regardless of whether you're, you know. West End or Hardwick or Morrisville, that thirty-five miles an hour is too fast within a village. And I think that a bunch of people know the trail, but I know, and you're getting down to thirty-five. Um, but I don't think that is a bad for conservation, in case what Ross is saying as a.
No, I think listen to your. Thirty-five's not that fast. Um, but it's, for your state, they're not going to buy it at thirty-five, they're guaranteed, it's too fast. It's too much of a person or dog, I would agree with that. But it doesn't matter that it's in the village or to here entirely, that's why I'm saying, yeah.
It's.
You know, it's sort of, the rules got to be so that they're adjusted, the whole thing, same rules, same people, same sharing, everything, it's got to be the whole length of it. The only difference we have here is there may be more condensed, uh, border, which just makes it easier to coastal. You see what I'm saying, certainly if I see one person, another person, another person, one person, it's going to be done, so you know you're going to have some, some, so. I understand it, I don't, I'm not against it, I just, I'm back, I'm with Eric, you guys do what you really get. We're going to have a lot of question, local law enforcement here on the rail trail, there's so much to do. Which is absolutely nothing that's ever been seen before around here, so. And then we'll address it, Ross, if we need to, but there's no problem there.
Well, we think. Useful for the board to bring the concern to the attention of the, the. I think seeing those committee so that it can have discussion about this.
I don't know about that. Yeah.
We do have, and we have the meeting that we have, that's scheduled just today, that's on Wednesday morning at eight thirty. About they'll be actually here in Hardwick.
It's not about trail.
Well, I, I don't think that's a problem, I mean, this is, this is, certainly. Asking the question, yeah, I gotta believe there's going to be other communities that have thought about it.
Maybe you can ask the question.
I just don't know if they've done anything about it.
You say.
I mean, I was going, you went out in the Marchville on Saturday and it's. On a weekend, Eric is busy, he's busy, same West End.
All right, so.
Something great.
We should, yeah, should ask them, I should just say, is it something that, that, that friend brought up, is it a concern and something that we at least are going to be looking to monitor this winter and?
Well, as a snowmobile, I certainly would not be against it being slower than you know, so.
Yeah, it's a short distance and, and so, and that's the area that.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a way to find, so you need to be alert and. Share the trail, that'll get you the trail, whether you're up the woods or you're in the.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, no one's doing thirty-five on the woods every time. So, yeah, that's, that's really a big problem, just people walking, I can't remember who was.
So thank you, Ross, and then move along.
Thank you.
Um, so next is, uh, select order to, to, sorry, to approve minutes from last time, which was November the seventeenth. I thought it was a good, did somebody want to?
Vote to approve this?
Seventeen.
That's written, great, any discussion changes on the minute? Call favor of approving the minutes, as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
Okay, so that's everyone's emotion carries, thank you. Next is, um, county managers' report, we can invite David.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, your, your team's kind of late tonight, brother.
Yeah.
I noticed you moved over into the middle.
Oh, my son.
Mike's not here.
I heard sirens, I don't know if Tommy got, oh, now I got fired. Yeah, you're fine, I can handle it. Um, so, first agreement has been sent to an attorney to draft up. Um, Mr. Davis and I came to kind of.
To a verbal agreement?
For kind of language toward purchasing sales.
Great.
So that is a step forward, so, showing like you know where that is.
Okay, and that's for a new town route.
Valid, yeah, I see that.
Oh, you did.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that.
Yeah.
Um, that's exciting.
Yeah, it is very.
Yeah.
Because our other ones.
I was just thinking that, 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 when you said that, that's what pops in my mind, I bet there's a lot of other towns, I was just thinking that.
I know two other towns.
Just there's a.
Um, continued negotiations with both bargaining units, um, at least in public works, we had a meeting this week, so that's going, moving, moving forward. Um, survey for the bridge and park closed with a hundred and three responses tied to the last one. Um, so all the same people came out. Um, S C group is preparing a process for option number one. Um, and there's some other details which some of you are aware of, um, we have the, uh, more, uh, comprehensive survey of the area. Uh, on the main street side primarily, um, just so we know where property lines are. And Tracy Martin submitted the grant application for feasibility study for moving the town garage and prior apartment care road. Um, I went against what the board said last time, um, we, we know that it works to have a town garage up here. So we're not going to invest in a feasibility study for up here. We're going to do it for there, so, because we know it works here, so first step, we'll do that, we're not, we didn't want to include.
The feasibility study is what he did for the, for.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe just, yeah, maybe just get somebody to engine, or to draft up plans if we're going to keep it here, so. I just, we simplified that, and with Tracy's timeline, that's what we did, I hope it's okay. I think we all will, yeah. Um, then the downtown paving project contract is coming to an end, I've spoken with the project engineer and there are several unfinished items that still need to be addressed, which will be addressed in the spring. Um, they're also aware of the P E and some of the crosswalks. I don't know if you, um, I don't know if you guys noticed, but the thing is, is completely coming off. And some places, it's.
It's a great year.
Yeah, so, um, they're aware of it and they're coming up with a plan to address it, this stuff didn't bond. So, so I don't know, the ground, I'm sure it was too cold, who knows?
Yeah.
So that's my report and sticking to it.
So. I know this could either be now or in some of our reports, but this, uh, something we're really just, uh, still want to talk to you, which is.
Oh, yeah.
Very exciting news.
Yeah.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
The only comment that we had was, we should put a motion light out there, it's just a statue, people can't see the.
Yeah, well, everybody has a cell phone with a light.
I know that.
And they sell these headlamps down at, um. Well, you can put a headlamp on and do the combination to the Kiko really easy.
But the.
So what about the hunters?
Same hunters, why are they on the phones at that, or are there any motions?
Well, yeah.
That it's, uh, too much of a burden for the town.
So what's nice is, um, is the opioid, so this is kind of like my rationale, so the opioid settlement money. Um, is go, it's a, you know, a reimbursement to the towns that have suffered from, you know, substance abuse, addiction. And this community space is, I think, is a good way to reinvest that money into motion lighting. Um, into like zoom capabilities for.
Yeah, that was the other thing, as I said, is they would like to be able to broadcast soon, I don't know, so it's good to be able to say.
Yeah, so we're on, and, and, and that's, that's my point.
Really, the, I.
Yeah, and I think it's a great space.
Yeah.
And we need it and we should be using it.
Yep.
So it makes me, makes me happy when people are in there.
Yeah, no, they, it's, it's good, they've been struggling.
Yeah. Right. Keep it short.
Yeah. Awesome, uh, the only thing, I just wanted to highlight, you already said it, like, for those watching at home, that option for one that they're collecting for the.
The cheapest one.
The cheapest, it's also the simplest.
Yeah. Which we can cut the.
We can cut it, letting people know that that was the, was the top one, the simplest one.
Was a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty, I think.
Was it priced?
Price range.
For just the bridge, but we, it turns out, we replaced the buttons, so.
Yeah, just been a great.
Yeah. Might have to hire someone to put the bridge there.
But we know six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand earmarks, so we might be moving in under that total. Or have that total, like, not like, you know how things are going.
Maybe.
Hopefully, we're going.
Glasses, yeah. If you and your rainbow glasses, they're. Go down here. Hang on, you said it, it's taller than the youngest house.
Yeah. All right, so next up is road forming report, they've been, uh, filing whatever.
They really have one.
Now. They did do something.
Yeah, so I can give you an update, um, I know that Mike Reno. Uh, who also allows for high park.
Okay.
And he also has the tree service, that we agreed to do some tree work.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, he, he and I went for a ride this morning, um, and we're going to do some roadside road clearing for some big trees. Um, you're going to try to get what you can get on weather, weather dependent next week. And then we'll clean up the rest of that road project in the spring, but this is a good way to get it. I had a, so Tommy met with him as well.
Okay.
Out here.
Yep.
And that's set up on Monday, awesome, yeah. They got another load, two, two more loads of salt, so we're doing pretty good on salt for now.
Are all our trucks running?
Our, some of them.
All the trucks are running.
That's amazing. And, uh, yeah, the rail strike is gone to President's death, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Really?
Yeah.
Those are good, yeah.
All right, thank you. Good, so next is, uh, police department report, we have, uh, Chief Mike Henry here, hello.
Hello. So I'll keep mine short and sweet, um, I think the big thing is that, uh, Casey and I have got the cops grant, the first phase of that done. Um, which is big, the next phase of that is, uh, an actual interview, where we're going to be looking for, uh, you know, a few commit, people from the community to. Sit in on that as well, that's on the twenty-ninth of, uh, this month. Um, other than that, uh.
I'm going to stop you for one sec, so, you know, what's to say about, we were randomly selected to be audited for our cops grant, um, which should start in two thousand seventeen. Um, and of course it took us a year and a half to find somebody and we had to withstand with, uh, the officer being on the, we left to be, there's somebody else, so it's been going on for five years. And so we were randomly selected for an audit.
So, yes.
So there's, there's a fairly large amount of information that they require. And so it was due today, we got it done, and then we have a two and a half hour video conference with them on September twenty ninth.
Which you're encouraging everyone to attend.
Yes.
That's that.
Okay.
Little so. Keep that short and sweet too. Yeah. Um. So, uh. We are selling the, uh, two thousand eighteen Ford Focus, I know that, uh, uh, you know.
Focus.
That's, I'm sorry, Ford Taurus, excuse me, Ford Taurus. Uh, I know that Danny was interested in that, but, uh, there's other people as well. Uh, but all wheel drive, it's on the Facebook page, if anybody's interested, it's out there. We're also selling light bars, uh, we have brush guards and computers as well, that we're selling through the Facebook page, so I just want to put that out there. If anybody's interested in anything like that. Uh, as far as the police department goes, the, uh, you know, the main thing that we're dealing with right now is we have a lot of, uh, leaving the scene of the crash. Uh, cases that we're dealing with, um, it, I don't, I don't know why, but it's becoming more and more prevalent when people are crashing, they're just taking off. Uh, so that's the big thing going on. Uh, we all, I guess the word's gotten out there that we do fingerprints. Because we're doing, uh, three to four fingerprints a day right now. Uh, everybody's coming down to Hardwick, uh, you know, it was originally set up for community members, uh, people close in Hardwick, but, uh. We've got people, you know, we had a lady from Concord that drove all the way down to Hardwick today. Uh, I guess because it's easier, um, so that seems to be pretty popular now.
Mike. Can I ask a really quick question about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question, was, is that revenue going to be in the, um, in the upcoming budget, because I know that there is some revenue.
Yeah, there is some revenue there, and Casey can probably talk more about how that come, when that comes in, we give that over to, uh, the town.
Yeah, it's under miscellaneous PD revenue and, uh, we did a reset for the next budget, it was worth it more.
Did you catch that, Kayla? I think she froze.
I was not able to.
Um, Kayla, we did put some in for the next budget, um, it's under P D miscellaneous revenue.
Awesome, thanks.
Uh, thank you for providing that service, I remember having to go to San J to get fingerprinted to volunteer in elementary school, so.
Hi, I heard.
Oh, you're kind of hard.
Yeah. We have a request in through, um, C D S proposal from the school. And part of that request is to get an A F S machine, which is automated fingerprint, so it's like on a screen. And it automatically goes to the thing, right now they're doing it with a. But that, we talked about A P brand. And. So it was tied into a request for a school program, because it involves.
Yeah, community mafia.
Yeah, yeah.
So we think they're funding.
So we think they're funding, uh.
And that would help improve the workload, make it easier at the D D.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great. What else, Mike?
I, I think that's it, short and sweet tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, all right, I'm going to move this, uh, to, where are we, item one. One, select order considered dissolving, I don't want to intermission. Since that, wait, downtown partnership has now been officially. So we don't need the commission anymore, because.
Yes, that is.
It's done.
It's completed its task.
The she endured. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, again, I'm happy to say that the, the board member, although commissioners have moved over to the board of the. Our. And we've added an additional.
Was that the way it was pending?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's progress, Danny, that's what it is.
Progress.
So you're going to make the motion to dissolve the downtown commission?
I suppose, sure, so.
Also there. There we go.
So, um, in seconds.
Any more different? Call favor of and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I shouldn't have waited, everyone? Whatever.
No. Did you want, did you want to say anything, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to introduce, I introduce myself, I'm Darcey Cam, in the Northern Division of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are the Chamber of Representatives of Harvard.
The Northern Kingdom Chamber of Commerce and we are the Chamber of Representatives of Harvard. And have been the last year and a half now and just wanted to put a face to this and I've been talking with Ollie on a very frequent basis and sharing as well with one, two, you know, the new leader, however you need us. Got a couple of raises for now, it's already been the whole of the the excellent partnership will continue to be and this is a disappointing situation.
There at least Kingdom Chamber, because the part the part the chamber that does here
Dissolved.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Waiting for a while.
We got
The chamber has been swimming for a while.
Yeah. Let's stop swimming.
Maybe we'll be
Yes.
I hope um I've done a number of different initiatives while I'm working with the 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 mouse and the website, you know, and get the moment and up and running that we all deserve.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so that motion carried, I didn't say that, but that everybody with favor dissolve when the downtown partnership is there. We now have the downtown partnerships. Um alright, next item two, select order discussed and approved the purpose of network hardware for the town and Hardwick's enhanced security feature. And we had in our
I mean, what can you do that?
No, I think we don't make any motion we do that. I think we had choices.
So so I had a little vote here with the item I was stuff that we need. Uh my plan is once you say this is okay, I'm gonna have an installer come, cause this was just
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah. The quote.
Okay.
Um from uh these the four four three technologies, I actually talked to them. They worked on the other quotes. Um and I'll have somebody come here, check everything out, and this could go down with the the number of of you know, switches and controllers could could go down.
Could be.
Cause they haven't, they just gone by like I described things. And then I'd like to get this done in conjunction with what the Lady Center is gonna do for us with uh cybersecurity stuff. So it's all kinda, this is the hardware and then the the backend stuff. I don't know, I've learned a lot about I T language. That's really lingo, little I T.
Yeah, learning the language, having learned stuff, though, I figured, but I mean, I
So end user.
Yeah.
So what do you need from us?
So I think just um up to the thirteen, the four four three technologies was thirteen thousand nine eight five oh five.
And this is for the
Purchase of the equipment, yeah, it's all
The three votes are for the same.
Identical, yeah.
Okay.
And then um and then there's gonna be like installer, be there like a service. Like if we sign up for a year service um for maintenance. And well, not monitoring, but just like updating. Uh the monitoring is is different. That's like that would be a yeah, this is like hardware, you know.
Great.
So this would be
Super quick question, OP, does this cover all town departments? Like would this also cover the police department?
So this is where, so So um town, the memorial building, the library, the town garage, the water and sewer plant, the P D and the senior, the P D's senior center. So the garage, the library is a lot of a building here and sewer plant. Like basically where we have computers with I T.
Great.
Do you need a motion to
To purchase the hardware. Not to exceed thirteen nine five.
I can second that. If that was a motion.
Okay, so Danny Danny made the motion and Kayla made the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that's everyone. So motion carries. Thank you very much for working on this because I think it's very important.
It is, but it's
I know it's not easy.
It's irritable. Well, it's just uh the learning the lingo, like like, you know. I can change the oil in a car, but when it comes to like doing a switch on a firewall, I look for the fire.
But this is really, yeah, and and the stuff that, I mean, I know Mike has done a bunch of stuff with the P D too to
Yeah.
You know.
It's a order. It's it takes just once.
Getting, yeah, getting caught out once would be really bad.
Yeah. And as the town fair, um yeah. Uh the V L C, the town fair, that I I sat in a a session with the Lady Center. And it's, we're getting us like a seven or eight thousand dollars service for free because it's it's done by students. That that are, you know, have government clearance. They have contracts with they deal with the maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's good.
Yeah, awesome.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, alright, so next is item three, business manager, Casey Browell presents draft budgets of police revenue and buildings and the rec committee. Oh, sorry, I read that wrong. You're gonna present police revenues and buildings and then separately, I think.
Trails, trails is not going tonight. Our creation committee is here and I'm actually gonna go first.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Go over there, say we
You got, you got a microphone.
I wrote some lovely notes, but I don't wanna read them yet. And they've been reading my
I'm gonna pull up our creation budget and clear my screen for those.
Do you need this? No, it's on the screen. I I can't have it. It's very blurry. It's only one line, we'll increase, okay. It's small and so my freedom. Go for it, go ahead. So last year, we didn't increase our budget um at all. We moved like line names around a little bit here and there to adjust what we're doing, what we weren't doing. Uh we do, we we want to propose this for this upcoming budget. Um an increase of two thousand community programming line. Um so our thought, and we've been talking about this in our committee, um is coming off the coattails of a successful soccer clinic we just did review. Twenty five kids, all the family state, it was a huge event. Um recognize that there's not a lot of people really wanna volunteer all the time. And so we gave the organizer and program soccer coach works at school, you know, we gave her stipend. And we said to ourselves, it's a ha ha moment without reach, um without after school program, without clinics going on, um how do we kind of pull people in to help us? Cause we don't kind of direct department per se, so we don't do the programming going on. Um on top of that, that cover stipends, materials for those programs. The other thing we thought about, the actual cushion for things we wanted to do, so we did the swim program last summer. Um teaching nervous swim, we'd like to do two weeks of that this year coming up. It was a huge success. We collaborated with Devon Burgess, Greensboro. Um but those things cost money. And um we'd like to see an increase of more kids who come to that program, so I cut off to that. So that's another um area, more money you go to. And if we had folks, we've had folks come to us and say, hey, we would like to do um you know, the basketball clinic for little kids not able to be like on a team or in the school system. Back with all the shirts and um supplement stipends for folks who necessarily can't volunteer, but would be willing to engage to do to do that. Um we'd like to obviously use some of that for other things we've been doing, like the bike rodeo, they could pull in and have that more um Hardwick and Trail Committee, not other folks coming into Hardwick and doing program for us. Um there's another conversation going around. We have uh another gentleman do our positive scheme program for youth, not reach, you know, happy programming. So that can um be an asset for us. Um there's not like gonna take place, so that two thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but it could cover a lot of little things we might need to do, would like to do.
Okay.
Where where was the reach funding? Where did the reach funding go? Where was it coming about?
I don't, so understanding, but funding is still there, right?
I can I can speak to this, Danny. Can you hear me okay?
Nope.
Um the reason why the reach program isn't running is not because of funding, it's because they don't have any staff. So the director quit and then all the site coordinators also quit, and so they've been working to hire a new twenty one C director and the district cannot access their state funds unless they have an executive director. So that's kind of like where the funding comes in. I know that David Baker, the new superintendent, is working really hard on this. And I think that they're planning on getting programs up and running again this winter. Um but that's all that I I just wanted to throw in my two cents there. And then in terms of the rec budget, because I used to run reach and was also on the rec committee, that line, that youth line used to basically just go to reach. And I know that Jason and the rec committee has really stepped up to do um their own youth programs now that reach is not running.
Yeah, I was gonna offer, cause I was doing like the mountain lake, you could reach and doing this and working in school, doing prosecutor scheme, and it's a lot. And you need people to do that. And when you find a way to do that, keeping them there, justifying their presence to continue to do the program. Giving them something to do that's really nice to our site and then, you know.
I also have to reach programs for a program. It is a very important program.
And it's not starting reach.
Yeah.
It's
Jason, I just have a question about Um so my question, you talked a little bit about um the cost of taking over some of these programs in terms of insurance. Have you actually found quotes for that?
No, my hunch is that David, Dr. Baker is going to reignite reach or some after school program at some point. Um if we collaborate with them like we did with reach, I don't think we would need independent insurance, cause he had, you know, covered that, like he did in the past. Reach love piggybacking off of reaching vice versa, so I think there needs to be more clarity around what our role would be with any programming, uh school programming, what they need from us and vice versa. That was very, wasn't transparent. Uh back in the past, I think that needs to be whatever Dr. Baker decides to do, would need to be kind of brought to the table and presented. Uh before to fund some of that stuff, we need to know funding, where it's going.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I asked is because if the town is running, which is not, I I I don't know what kind of insurance we have for some of these community and youth events. Um I'm sure it's not cheap. Um I don't know if we need to like get, you know, up our insurance liability for something like that.
Well, I mean, if we're doing our own programming, I mean, we have the Easter egg hunt that we do the rec committee sponsors that falls under the town insurance umbrella, I would assume that we're part of the town, correct? I mean, I would assume
Well.
Might need an events, event, um Yeah, it could go either way, it could be either way. Sometimes they knock out like the reality event, you need to manage better.
Yeah, I'll um talk to the L C T.
Like it's a chance that he had this time.
Sounds like at least for this budget year, you guys need this amount of money to do what you guys wanna do. And hopefully by then, it's fully my next budget year, regions to back up. In a conversation, be about maybe figuring out how we can all work together. Right, with more transparency, cause I do remember transparency and the money end of the thing was a issue before as well, but Well, the great thing too is if you have other organizations come in, like Teach America, teach kids to swim. They have their own insurance, their own S A, their own organization. All we do is pay the bill and brought so many more local kids to Caspian to the program than outsourcing, so. Um so if we can be creative, creative about that in the meantime, until we get a legit program in town with insurance, that then um is kind of a win win, a win win over.
So so just to come back to the proposed budget, we're basically looking at same budget as last year, except for an increase of two thousand community program.
Yeah.
To help uh our stipends for various C programs.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
We go, alright, well now, talking to kids?
No, well, if you like, we'll get a lot more entertainment to come, so.
Thanks, everybody. This is, this is great, that was good information, I'm looking at all this stuff. You can come to more me.
Good guy. Yes.
Alright, um let's move to buildings. Um
Is it safe to follow along in the
Yeah, so See right away, um that basically increases our fuel oil. Um last fiscal year, we were paying two forty five. Um most latest delivery we had was six dollars and seven cents. Um so realistically, I basically took our U, our dollar amount for two thousand twenty two and doubled it. Because our price is more than double essentially, so as you can see, Memorial Building gone up seventy, seventy seven percent, only increase thousand thousand from the current budget. We some deal with the prices.
I'm gonna, I'm going to
What about the uh so the I wonder if there are some of the, because of the highways, was
Yeah, it's not on, yeah. It is, but I don't know if it's because there was another
Um so you're, I have this, I'm looking at this stuff this afternoon, and I'm just thinking, I'm also kind of poking around it. The news and some of the market studies. And I'm gonna propose that this is fine to roll with tonight, but over the course of the next month or so till we finalize this, I think
Prices might come down and
Well, let's see, but I on like the the thing about the actual fuel market, yeah, the futures, because the thing about the fuel market is that they're just really volatile right now. And so, yeah, it's really expensive to fill your fuel tank or diesel tank right now. But the front, the price of a barrel of crude has been dropping.
Yeah.
And so you know, I guess what I'm gonna say is that we should, that this is ideal. Yeah, right. Cause this is realistic for the prices we're paying today. That's affecting this year's budget that we're in. It's gonna probably eat into our fund balance at the end of the year. And so
A year away.
But we're looking at next winter. And so I think we just thought that everybody ought to just ponder that and chew on it for the next month or so.
Yeah. I think so, we were paying two forty five in fiscal year twenty two, we were fixed at two forty five. So double that is four dollars and ninety cents. Um so right now, the price was what, six oh seven, our last delivery. So we sort of are looking at as only being four ninety, which is, you know, like there's nineteen left, so.
Well, I think
So A good place for a minute, Casey.
Casey.
But I see how everybody's saying, you're already saying it's gonna be double.
Yeah.
Say it's gonna be triple where it is right now.
Yeah.
Almost, right now, we're almost triple, right, six seven?
Well, yeah, six oh seven was the last delivery, but our, they fluctuated, I mean literally the one, what that was eighty five cents less. No, this first year, the um we were not able to get a lock in price for our fuel oil or the diesel fuel we're eating with.
And so that's
That's the markets that you follow.
That's another thing, the markets settle that in the next year.
Oh, most definitely. And it does fluctuate, but the heating line, the last two bills for some of the buildings fluctuated eighty five cents, but it went down, it went down eighty five cents and it went back up a dollar. Like it's, it's very, very
Well, that's what, that's why I want, I'm with it, thank you, Eric, that's good, good idea.
So yeah, we did start making eye on it, but that's, that's why you're seeing these increases in this fuel, or that's, those are
And so it's, it's not just here, it's when they look at the highway budget, the county budget, if they're all even.
Yeah, it's miserable and all that good stuff, yeah.
The other thing is, is when we're looking at our budget, like you just said, we should remember we made up, we're gonna struggle this year with having
we made up, we're gonna struggle this year with having, wanting to use a lot of our service. And we're not having any choice. Well, we're gonna have to use some, there's no doubt, but we should make sure that we don't use too much to where if we're a pop in this budget, we still have enough to.
Next year. Don't go too far.
No, you're right, and we don't, this year, we're talking here, and we're gonna have to take the bullet, we're not, we don't, I don't have an interest in passing too much of this on.
Right.
Cause I think that's, like, I, that's why I'm important, I'm in the water, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, any specific questions about the buildings, cause I think.
So basically, it's pretty straightforward, the only thing that's getting us really is the fuel, right?
Yeah.
I think insurance stuff is pretty stable.
Yes.
So. Not to, to be clear, I guess, there's no, but the sewer bed building facility was in the sewer budget.
Right.
And the highway garage building is in the highway budget.
It does, yeah, um, and I, and it has been that way, it's, it's literally in there, we're.
Yeah.
But I think it's because um, this, I, you know, I just took this over, and I think it's because there wasn't enough room on the pitch. That's what I think, so. And we want to, and we want to split and make buildings two pages, it's the same thing with, oh yeah, so highway, I think is the only one that doesn't show up on here, so if we wanted to sort of change it and split, and do changes to buildings, we certainly have room to handle to do that, so if you'd like to see it taken out of sort of the highway budget input here, you know, I can certainly do that.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna go to the highway budget, it's gonna be, you know, the fuel oil for the building is gonna be shown in.
It actually is going, the fuel oils for them is not gonna be affected, because they're, they have propane, and we did get a lock-in price for propane, and it's fairly favorable.
Right, you know what I'm saying, the, the cost is still in the place, should be in the building.
Right. So, you know, like, so utilities, um, insurance, fuel oil and stuff, I can pull out and move it over to buildings, that's like, that'll be it, I just will need to put buildings on each separate pages, which is another big deal, our forecast room for it, so.
I am just. I was just gonna, I don't wanna get into, I don't wanna have a too long of a conversation about this, but I do think that um, it's worth at some point talking about what we can turn over to electric, because uh, I don't know, it seems like the future of fuel is uh, gonna be pretty up and down, so maybe that's a longer conversation after budget season for next year, but is there, are there either vehicles or certain things that the town can think about for the future for other heating fuel sources?
I've spoken with uh, Bill, our energy committee guy, about uh, heat pumps for the public safety building, specifically the furnace that's in the additions, and we might start there with installing um, some heat pumps in that side of the building, so those are like, and high efficiency. The problem is, is they, we would have to invest in cold weather heat pumps, or heat a furnace with some oil on hand for the really cold. Uh, those really only work deep into the shoulder seasons, so it doesn't fix the deep winter. So this, the technology, but I, I do agree with you, Kaylee, I think it's good to be diverse with our energy and our heating stuff.
And um, I think when we are looking at new town garage, it's a perfect time to figure out like, how do we make that energy efficient to start with, and then, you know, how do we use it? Maybe electricity is the, the main fuel in this plan.
Yeah.
Electric is free?
Yeah, it's totally free, we own an electric yard.
I just wanted, everyone wants electricity, it must be great.
Yeah. Um, it's just cheaper than uh, diesel right now. I think propane is actually the cheapest, not if you're in the market, right?
Right, yeah.
But if you're.
More your problem.
But yeah, good point, everything, thank you.
Yeah, and I think as time goes on, we're gonna have, like, definitely the, like, the cruisers for the P V are gonna end up being electric.
Have you driven a, uh, one of those new Lightnings, the more that one fifty?
They're fast. But you didn't go over thirty-five.
I haven't changed my machine.
I don't know, that's gonna be.
That's gonna be so serious as money, I mean, you're trying to get, we're putting a lot of pressure on electricity, it's gonna save the world, save us money.
But you gotta earn a few of the money, like, cause, yeah. Anyway, we digress.
So are we?
We're done.
Yeah.
Good news. Good news, we've seen a lot of really large increases in departments.
Yeah.
Budget is one point eight. So, I have my heat highlights, so cost grant obviously will be completely fed by this budget, so that's why those expenses are gone away.
But the associated revenue is also gone away.
Yes, correct.
That's, that's fun.
We're looking into retention, go retention grant or continue, like.
Rehab does exist.
Um, potentially, yeah.
That's definitely.
Um, so, just, you know, some vehicle maintenance and things, we've got newer vehicles, so we went down a little bit on the tires and vehicle maintenance just went down a thousand dollars on those dispatch services, um, we have received a preliminary notice, those are gonna go up about seven percent. That's on here, um, retirement expense is showing a decrease, but that again is associated with your salaries, um. So this base payroll, it's for full-time and chief. And the part-time budget is for full-time at nine hundred hours by year.
So for full-time and chief and, and the part-time.
For part-time at nine hundred hours each.
So basically, are you saying you see that it's cheaper to have more part-time officers? Is that what this is showing us?
I don't know as though that's the current, like.
You've kind of tossed that around.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's hard to find even a full-time officer right now, so. Um.
So not cheaper, but this, this is more like what our scenario currently is.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you are saving on uh, a lot of things, like the uh, um, the health insurance, you know, the part-timers don't take that, they don't have retirement expenses, that, you know, a lot of other things they don't have that full-time officers have. Uh, ho- holiday pay, uh, vacation pay, you know, they, when the part-timer is there, they're they're just getting their pay for, for that, so you are saving quite a bit there.
I mean, I'm guessing like your choice would be to have all full-time and not have to do what, because it must make you a lot more scheduling, a lot more everything dealing with all part-time folks.
Yeah, it, it definitely is a lot more uh, work when it comes to scheduling. Um, and yes, we would like to have another full-time person, but again, uh, we are fortunate that we've got uh, two people who've got more than thirty years' experience, um, and that's, that's huge for the town of Hardwick.
Yeah, no, that's true. Uh, well, I don't think you did any wrong, I, I speak.
That's the nicest, that's the nicest budget we've seen, so, so can we increase it?
Oh, good job.
Hmm, so, yeah.
Good work.
Any other questions about that?
Nope, not at this point.
Okay. We are, so next meeting, we will have library and trails, which are the only two we haven't seen, however, there are estimates that were already put into place and lined items, so this next will be about as close as our first run is right now. So here we are, revenue and budget summary. Um, so current useful harmless is, um, that's based on the payment we received in the current year, so basically just for that, for next year, um, that has been received. A lot of these based on what we took in in twenty-two, and what we budgeted in twenty-three are not changing, like zoning permits, licenses, and these recording, these, those figures aren't quite accurate. To be real, um, you'll see an increase in grant aid revenue, um. That's the um, program that we participate in every year, to sort of get some of that, those for our clients. Um, there is some expense, but usually our revenue is more than the expense, because we use our income naturally for the, probably for.
Also, that, participating in that program, we do a lot of maintenance things that we should be doing anyway, so.
So this summer, we did Houston Hill Road, Smith Farm Road, and some additional work on Bunker Hill. Um, and we just submitted for that.
We're waiting for approval for Bunker, for Smith Farm Road and Houston Hill Road. Um, we had to do some.
Backtracking here.
A E P store today, and, um, was it, basically, John Lucio, was it there, and he was, made a point of telling me that we could, that he was.
Re-evaluate soon?
I'm gonna check the roads right.
Thanks, thanks.
So it's good to be here, like, yeah, that's good to be here, bringing feedback about how big the roads out of town are. They're doing a very job on the surfaces, but a big part of that is that, kind of brush back, it's made our roads look so much better.
And the ditching they've done.
You see the ditching?
Years, right, well, that too, but yeah.
Yeah, no, they're really, they look good, they're, they're good shape.
Uh, so unfortunately, the revenue is not the increase like a lot of our other budgets, but that's just the way, the way it is.
So, yeah, small, so kind of small increase in revenue.
What are restricted donations?
Um, well, so we don't think that it's not anything, it's, I've got a creative category concern, since we have um, some formations that you had to start at the equity committee, that's our general fund item, and those are restricted for the equity committees, so I had to sort of put that kind of around the budget for anything, but because there was revenue by the restricted divisions in the past, it's sort of if there are any that's coming here, or you can bump that off, then I'm all over here, but right now, it's maybe.
It doesn't matter, we have to say that, and.
Right, we did.
In uh, part of the nation. You have, this revenue, so are we still, I'm gonna ask people to donate?
Well, this, again, this is the, so we have, remember, it's a six thousand dollar show, so it would be in the expense side, it would be six thousand dollars, and we would need to try to let free to meet the next three that we've always done, so that, that's a decision that.
Three is going in on the revenue side, we have, even though we.
But.
No.
No, not the risk, we're not doing it this normal day, we're giving.
Rest is for the mission.
This is part of the call, we're paying it here off. Yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna start it up.
It's a little proposal, we take that permanently and put it into the rec budget. Take that off, just take it off, stop doing it.
Sure, it was to be that.
I say we invest the money in live music, in house series, in live music.
If fireworks spread slash spring festival, that's what we talked about last time is.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Investing in spring festivals.
And so that, you know, if another urbanization that wants to take on fireworks as part of the spring fest, and we contribute financially to the spring fest as a whole, that's an option, so um, it would then take that sort of responsibility on us, because the, the part is, is that we need to prepay six thousand dollars, then you have to go seek donations, and you're a risk leader, you sit on the bottom and do that.
But so, I wonder whether adding the spring fest thing, or maybe it makes more sense to just have it in region department. You know, if Juana says the spring fest, they can run a separate fundraising thing, and we can potentially participate in, in some other way, but um, why wouldn't we just, if they want?
If, if. If REACH organized, the, I thought C A E organized, we did last year, didn't.
No, that was, was Juan.
Yeah, that's, that's who owns spring fest, basically.
That's their event, yeah.
We just supported it, but we had worked hard.
Yeah, right, well, we also, I think we gave that.
Yeah.
We support the happenstance, four thousand dollars.
Out of recreation.
Yeah. Oh, I, oh, that just, yeah, oh. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe this is sharing, understanding, but I don't, just to be fair.
Pretty big, but I brought that, yeah, that. I've stayed away from fireworks for years, so, because it was such a rumor, the first time I brought up, why are we bidding so much money on this? It's uh, it's, it's problematic to a lot of people and animals.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the best way to get rid of six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's just lying on.
I mean, you can't even get rid of six thousand dollars on a slot machine, that.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, it's something to change about, or obviously just do a lesser amount for the spring fest and sort of, you know, do fireworks, but that's, we don't have to decide that tonight, but something, as we.
I'm not getting opposition to.
Bring things down, then that's.
You want fireworks, come to the next meeting, tell us why you want them.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. We gotta hear from the public on the fireworks.
You know, just get the, I don't know, the, the test, so. Do you want to, I'm gonna change right now and say, they're not six thousand, but do a lesser amount for spring festival instead? Or what do I do? Or consider it a part of recreation, community programming?
Where is it?
It would be under community programming, and.
And that's what, that's what they, that's what they wanted to increase.
That's, they just wanted to increase, so why would, increase it that way?
Then that's that.
Yeah, and it's, it's flat.
And then it's flat overall, just give it a thousand, and we, we scratch our six thousand dollar part, and we scratch the three thousand.
And, and so we asked them, yes, we'll give you the increase, but we want that, their contribution to spring fest.
At the same one that was, right, what they're saying is a value. Yeah, so they, what they really wanted to.
Yes.
Alright, so we're gonna take it out of here.
You can whisper in someone's ear.
He needs practice.
I don't know.
Okay, so I'm taking it out of revenue and.
The goal of those meetings, David.
Taking it out of revenue and thinking about the expenses. So now, new figures.
Yeah, it doesn't really change a lot. Yeah, with, yeah.
We're doing, because it's right there.
Yeah, so. I have a general question as we look at bottom lines, and that is, um, there's, it's, there's a point where we get an estimate of the grand list. I don't remember when that happens.
Um, I already have what it is as of July first, twenty-two.
Get the next one, until.
Right, so. Right, so it's.
So much.
To our tax rate estimate here, the way you're trying to see on the screen, but. Um, I have the grand listed, um, you know, a hundred and ninety three million twenty eight thousand eight hundred.
About different of last years?
Yeah, I think it's up. I'm pretty sure it's up, I don't know how much, but yes, I believe it's up, so then. Right now. I'm proposing. A hundred and twenty five thousand unbalanced offset it, our unbalanced is at one point, um. About one point two five million. Um, with a hundred thousand committed to the best chain bridge, that rounds it down to one point one five. How we anticipate, we will use probably two hundred and fifty thousand this year. That's why I'm making one twenty five and we're still gonna be. You know, around probably like seven hundred thousand. Yeah, so, um, and then we might be in a position for the twenty five budget to offer another fifty thousand. And that's why we're doing a gradual papering.
Yeah.
Just to bring the balance down and offer a little bit offset the tax rate, so in this scenario, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Is eight point eight five wins appropriations. So a hundred, about a hundred and sixteen dollars per hundred thousand.
Where, where, where did it go?
It is actually, isn't it?
That's why they say that it doesn't, it's not gonna amount anything.
At all.
Just, it usually doesn't.
Right.
We don't, to me, that just shows that we're doing the best we can do.
Right, so in a somebody has a two hundred thousand dollars, maybe two hundred and thirty dollars for the year. That's kind of.
I mean, the other, the other thought is that with the budget, how to produce it even more, I know this is popular, but we go into building capital.
And that's, that's.
But just to keep the block.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't know. Nobody does.
I mean, the reason is, it's gone up this year, last year is not, not our budgeting.
No.
Our budgeting, I, I just forced budgeting for the last decade, but.
Pretty standard, right?
And we don't want it to be like that, and you, you know, you're not popular, and this year we're not gonna be popular. Yeah, so maybe you have anything to do with it, other than making that decision.
You know, I understand.
I mean, enough here is to take money, make something, something, so.
You know.
That's gonna be popular to some people, but it's not with.
I've said this before, is that. We are certainly not alone in this, um, I have talked to other finance directors, the other towns. Um, you know, one in particular that is probably twice the size of us. Sort of, okay, just to keep going, you know, the same level we are. It's gonna go up nine hundred thousand dollars. So we are not alone in seeing.
I, I think we are in a fortunate position with our fun balance, it was like this year that we're in right now, for example, where we didn't know. The, when we were budgeting for this current year, we didn't know inflationary pressures that we'd be heading into, and so the, I mean, they were coming into it with a fun balance. It's gonna support us. Potentially overspending by a quarter million dollars is really big. And then everybody's like, okay, that's just what it's not.
We're lucky, we have the ability to do that.
Exactly, yes. And that's, yeah.
Right, because there's a lot of reasons around the other, right? They were, it was the whole story, but now it happened.
Right. So, so it's good.
I do think.
Gail's, Gail's time here.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that I, I think it's interesting, and I, maybe I heard this, maybe I didn't, but it's interesting that our. Um, percent increase is almost exactly the cost of.
Right.
The cost of living increase, um, and I think that will, like, will connect to people, but I do. I mean, it sounds like the board is in agreement that this is pretty close to the best that we can do, but we still have time. To try and make it a little bit less for taxpayers, and I think that maybe we can focus for the next few meetings on. I know it's silly, the like fireworks conversation we had doesn't, it doesn't seem like it changes that much, but it does change a little bit, it would be nice. To lower it if possible, I think we would all agree on that as well, so maybe we can kind of. Work to, to go through some of those little, little pieces that we can have conversations about, like the fireworks, for example, and decide is it necessary? Or is it luxury, or should it be in a different place? I think we do that every year, um. And I think we're doing the best that we can, but it is still gonna be, still gonna be tough on people.
Yeah, definitely, and, and I still, um, stand by my earlier statement that I think we ought to all. ponder the oil futures over the next month or so. You can't really predict, but you can. Get an idea, like, has been super volatile, maybe it'll settle down, or maybe it'll get worse too, buddy.
So for the next meeting, we'll have library trails, which will be our last two. Which will then really give us our final picture, um. Of, you know, final first draft full run through, um, and then maybe we can sort of, we'll get those two and then recap everything, see where we're at. Um, and then I would say. Um, we can maybe talk about, you know, if there's any areas we can cut down, in the meantime, obviously between now and the next two weeks. As I get more information that comes in, because sometimes that happens, like, oh, this, you know, we just get a finalized price for this or that, um. I will continue to. Lower it any way I can, and if there's any news about additional expenses, I'll have to address that too, but. Um, hopefully we'll have a more. Here insurance time or the same.
Could you, for next? I don't really wanna discuss it necessarily, but just so we have it, could you put together, um, the. Fun balance. Over the last several years, just go back, I don't know how far, five years or something, and just say. Like, I don't know, it's the end of the fiscal year, but just like, what it is on this day and twenty seventeen and then twenty eighteen and, you know.
Yeah, go back like seventy years, that's really easy thing.
Okay.
It's a little chart, what's. So I know for a while, like, we haven't been growing yet, say for seven or eight years, I don't think we've been into it yet. You will be shared most definitely, so I can.
So, yeah, you can say that's how we ended the year, on each of the year, like, this is the fun balance and how we, oh, I guess that was.
Why don't you draw on a little graph, basically?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, and I don't, I don't care if it's a graph, if it's a small enough number, uh, if it's only like five or ten years, if it's a small chart to look at.
Right, I'll, I'll do something, I'll get something together, anybody else suppose?
And then somewhere else.
No, but she said library, and what's library?
Yody will be here for the seventy fifteen meeting to give you an update on that. Yes, that's, I said, if we're gonna do that, it's a perfect time to update the board on where things are at.
I think they, didn't they change the contract to the construction management, and they're looking for. Uh, they put out an R P for the construction management.
I don't think.
No, I know, so it's still moving forward. Yeah, they, they tried, they, they pivoted. Not completely turn around. Now that's a fair beast.
Well, the yellow barn, all the bad we're getting is that if we were, if we were able to do a construction management style delivery of that. Construction, we'd have way more interest from the.
Today was the day.
It's been, it's been extended to the center of the.
That was interesting.
So, less liability. Uh, financial liability and construction. And with the markets, the way we're running right now, it's.
So, and so it's like, so it's like, it's. I guess it's more, more of a cost plus, like, like, they, they say, yeah, we'll do it for this, and we'll, you know. Whatever the cost is, and we're gonna tack on three percent or whatever their percentage is. But we can't because of. One of our unders just sits like a man.
No, well, I didn't know that rose. So, these guys are way out of control.
So, uh, so libraries update next week.
Weeks, yeah.
And then you got two weeks off. But yeah.
There's five Thursday, if mentioned.
Oh, it was the, um, I know I'm getting ahead too, but, uh. We need to finalize the budget, usually it's the drop dead, something like January twenty, if there's something.
Because the, um, town meetings. This is a few extra days, so I'm, I need to confirm when Tanya, but I think. That you'll be able to approve them.
Oh, nice.
So.
And that's a little bit of time to get the report together.
So I'll have pretty much, they're all of their part already done, except for the budget portion of it, so. I'm gonna see about, yeah.
We need to revisit that.
So that's, we'll go and do that in new business, yes, so that's.
Okay, so we're, sorry, we went all three.
All business, I think.
All the, okay, so let's. Yeah, we split for reports. Very, that's, um. We not randomly, very, uh, conversations, I don't know.
You mean, what about what?
Well, Danny, you reported about having used the. So, anyway, are there any others like work?
Nothing new, I mean, the downtown commission, as we know, it's no doubt about that, but all the same people are on the. And in the new organization, and so, and Heather comes next. To the next meeting, to talk about the progressives there, finishing up, and then. And we'll go to the downtown board and. I think they're really, you know, like, late, late January, something like that, whenever they meet.
Okay.
Um, I apparently they don't leave. Yeah, so we're going January.
Uh, new business?
Well, new business would be, so just we need to figure out dedication and a cover photo.
Oh.
Of course. I think we can already. Yeah, we don't. I had an idea too, um, yeah, we don't wanna talk about that since we surprise, but, um, yeah.
Does it?
Doesn't have to be, but we try.
I think we should do a picture of the, the town or. Yeah, the inside of the town or.
So. This is, this is the way it is.
Okay, so.
Opie, you don't wanna do a picture? You don't wanna do a picture of the sewer and water plant? That's the big project right now.
Yeah.
Alright, so maybe in the next meeting, I mean, the cover photo, we don't have to recap that often during this meeting, but. Um, as a surprise for residents.
Alright, great, uh.
My hope was that we were going to make a little addition to the annual. Report by, uh, maybe creating a page that gives some description to what it, what it is to be on this live board with kind of a. Little job description thing to let people know what, what is expected of a select board, or some of a person on a. On a commission, as a commissioner, you know, because we have these places, like plan commission has an open seat, has had an open seat for a while. You know, we've been a lot of stuff, but there's still a visiting person there, and. We have a lot of new people in town, so they may not really know that there's opportunities to participate in their.
I wonder if that already exists somewhere, I'm sure the O C T, that's, but I was wondering.
Maybe they have something, maybe, or, um. I mean, the other case, uh, I think we wanna, before we get to that organization, we have to founding. And make those appointments, we need to take a look at whether or not. Do we, are those all, all the equipments that we make, are they really functioning, are we, you know? Are the people that are in those positions just, um, just, uh, taking up space, or are they ineffective? Do we really wanna just reappoint everybody who's, says, sure, I'll do it again, even though there isn't really a.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, I probably were, trying to change, trying to change, but some, it has some times.
So, yeah.
To, to take a look at it at some point, one of these meetings after we approved, but. We kind of, we improve the budget right at, at that point when we go to print on the. Annual report, so I'm just, I don't need some thoughts.
Wow, so I'll just say though, that, um, putting, uh, the descriptions that you're trying to draw up, interest in select order and missions. Um, putting in the annual reports are a good idea, but that's definitely playing the long game, because.
Well, yeah, so maybe it's, uh, some, a page that goes in the printed thing, but it's also something that gets developed fairly soon, so that we can. Send it out with all the electors.
Sorry, you know how in the town of Berther's that lists a local initial select board for different people? Are you envisioning that, like, for each one of those, there'll be a few sentences sort of describing what that role is, is that what you're making? Like, planning commission, development review work, you know, what they do, um, and select board, um. Um, we usually shoot for around fifty, and I think last year we were forty. Four, forty five, so there, we have rooms. There is room, yeah.
Do you have to have a, a number divisible by four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the day ending, the day why? Okay. We need a nice transition. Yeah, I think so. And it's probably gonna be. Then last, but there'll be a lot of.
And so.
So that is, no schools, you're gonna have all the schooling communities. So, so that is, no schools are, you're handling school, each community center.
We have to, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah, it'd be great to have an honest discussion.
Yeah.
Those are, all that has is a good, honest discussion, and you understand, there needs to be a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know.
Um, we do also need to make sure, um, I have given Tanya the heads up that with any unbegun bond for the gravel pit. And we will need to hold. One or two core hearings about that, uh, sooner than later, so. I mean, probably in early January, and then I think we have another one with a certain number of days, I'll have to figure out on my head. We don't know, we need to be able to hear things about that, and it's also gonna be really important, so that people understand. The importance of us getting that given that our gravel pit is that exciting.
Right.
Hope you like the drill?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Well, just a bit of information, that's all, yeah, looking for sensitive, and look through this map, because it looks after really that, it is a gravel. They showed resources, you know, saying, it's just someone. That's with, someone like Wiz is gonna look at it from a journalist's perspective and say.
So, I who know nothing about gravel pits will suddenly understand.
Alright, last, all, we missed this older minutes.